Well, that should be going here pretty soon.
Is Chris going to Germany too?
Yeah, he's been, he's ordered, he's not back till, now they want to Germany, France, uh, yeah, he's gone three weeks.
He said, he said they, I think they're chairing them this time.
Yeah, he's been gone.
I'm sure you have the, I'll come back to the next one.
Yeah.
Maybe it's out of those.
I've been in.
Yeah, sick.
Made a pretty, about a nice trip on this.
Yeah, so having a good time, yeah.
I had to see him and I sent him an email when I was in, but.
Yeah, he's still, yeah, well, yeah. They were planning on that, uh, this Saturday, maybe since Europe. That's his second. I remember like three years ago, from now to present. So this time they decided to go with June, March, August. No, I don't. If you have more than just a week to wait, it takes you two days to see where the jet lag. So, I mean, it's, you just wait.
Something to change.
Yeah, so we really gotta, you gotta be there a couple of weeks just to, at least a perilous meeting. And it's tough one. Go back to last season's.
We'll call tonight's meeting the city council order. I want it to be known that there's a revised agenda this evening. There's a closed session for a non-electual person. That would be the change on the agenda.
Mandy, could you take a roll call for us, please?
Bob, Richard?
Here.
Lloyd Luttrell?
Present.
Charlene Abel?
Present.
Kent Miller?
Present.
Matt Oddie?
Here.
Rick Brown?
Here.
Tony Gingler?
Here.
Robert Peterson?
Here.
Thank you. If you'd stand with me for the invocation, tell them your invitation to the church.
Most gracious heaven Father, we're just coming here to say thank you for the beautiful weather that you provided. Thank you for the moisture that you sent our direction. We also thank you Father for the wheat harvest that's out there and we just ask that you continue to place your hand on the farmers and give them protection as they bring the loads of wheat into town or to their grain beans. Guide us this evening and lead us in the direction you want us to go in the decisions that we need to make for the city of Beloit. Please be with our country leaders and our state leaders and we ask Father that you be with our soldiers that are protecting us overseas and both here in the states. We ask these things to the earth and Jesus. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Boy, do you have anything at this time?
Do. Council Peterson and myself, we've had to crew around the whole city and visited all the departments. We decided to do that after the retreat and that was one of the concerns that department and council people have come around. Nice one to thank all the department heads and all the employees that we have to visit with. We're doing nice.
Okay, thank you. Matt?
Just looking forward to 4th of July.
Yeah. I think the fire issue's not gonna be another issue about it. Charlie?
Uh, I wish everybody a happy 4th of July. Have a safe, safe one. And I, um, I also, I talked to Lloyd and I also plan to do the same as he did and go around and visit the, the departments and department heads and, you know, have a visit with them and see if they have anything to say.
Okay, thank you. Bob?
Just one thing, I've had several people approach me about issues of dogs and I'm getting different stories. I wish Chris had here tonight, but I wanna know what the proper procedure is and maybe we can get something in the paper because I'm hearing different things as to how you should handle this, that whether Chris has to see it or you need pictures or what's to take place. And I, I think we need to get the public informed as to really how to handle a situation that comes up.
We discussed that a few meetings ago, but maybe we can get that kind of, put together a press release that, that we can get out there and, so that people will know the procedures to follow. That's all. Okay, thank you, Bob. Okay, thank you. Bob?
Well, like Lloyd, I enjoy going around talking to people. I got to meet a lot of them and I didn't even know worked this city and really appreciate that and had a enjoyable time with them. And really appreciate their input.
Okay, well, thank you for taking the time. Uh, next item on the agenda, staff reports. Katie, do you have anything at this time?
Uh, just a couple of things. To answer Bob's question, I think what I'll do is wait till Chris gets back and then he and I can get together and probably the both of us put something together for the paper and also present it at a council meeting and then hopefully from there work will get out about how to report and who to report to and what that procedure is and, and then I might explain a little bit the court procedure that it's, as you all know, it's not the quick one. So, there's no quick fix to the dog issues, but we can certainly work on that. Um, the only other thing, I guess, just wanna let you know that I've been working on is codification. We went through the code section by section with you all and I am sending all those changes to the league with hopes that in August we will have a complete code for you guys to adopt by ordinance and then hopefully around the same time as the comprehensive plan. So, they'll kind of, it'll be a busy month because we'll have the budget that month too. So, that's not where I'm at with the code. It's coming along. So, that's it for tonight.
Thank you. Lynn, you have anything at this time?
Well, a couple of things, but I'd like to start off with a guest here tonight. We have Mary Tucker from NCK Tech. I believe they have an anniversary coming up, so she'd like to address the council a little bit about what your activities are gonna be and what that's all about, so.
Thank you. My name is Mary Tucker and I'm the marketing and foundation director for NCK Tech and on behalf of President Burks and faculty staff, I just wanted to make the community aware, we are celebrating our 50th anniversary, August 1964. The Vocational Technical School opened with six programs that are about 70 students and of those six original programs, we 50 years later are still offering five of them and the one that we aren't offering is, was vocational agriculture and we actually have an ag equipment technology program which that, that original program has morphed into. So, we really are still offering and in addition to a lot of other programs we've added over the years, but we are having the kickoff celebration on August the 23rd, which is a Saturday. We'll start the day with a 5K run in the morning and then we'll have a dinner and auction in the evening. Just wanted to extend an invitation to the community to help us celebrate. I will leave some information on that with Mandy and some order forms for tickets. We are also soliciting sponsorships and add space in our auction programs for those that are interested in that. And then we will celebrate really all year long and several events planned throughout the year on a monthly basis and all that calendar events will be posted on our website. We'll have several events which are reunion opportunities for former, former faculty and staff, alumni, and then also some things to get the community involved. One thing that I'm really excited about is a, I'm creating a historical timeline mural which will be a history of the college and decade panels and that will be on display at the minority union or the student union on campus and we'll also have, you know, we have a campus in Hays as well, so we'll have a version of that in Hays too. And then doing, just a look back at the 60s and a collection of things of significant depth around the 60s that'll be on display as well. So, just wanted to make everyone aware of that and thank the community. I think it was a real tribute to the community to have your vision and foresight of establishing a school here and your support of it over the years. We sincerely appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Lynn, do you have any further comments?
Uh, just a couple of things here. I know that in particular Heather Hartman and the folks over at Regional Planning are working hard on their latest housing grant, their pilot project and it's due, I think, today. If I remember right, you got that off there. So, we had some last minute details cleaned up yesterday and, and that's 500,000, I think we applied for, total grant money on that. So, we'll see what happens there. I think we're the first and only first city to ever apply for that. So, we'll see what happens. We'll probably know sometime in the fall, maybe, I guess.
Actually, 30 days. She told me today.
30 days, okay.
She emailed back and said 30 day countdown started today.
Fantastic, so we won't have to wait too long to see the results on that one. So, and you did mention the comprehensive plan. Uh, we did have a meeting a couple of weeks ago downstairs as the open forum. We, we had, I'm not sure how many people attended. We had a pretty good crowd down there though and, and I know some of the council members attended that too. And we had quite a bit of input from folks especially around the city here who came to look at what we're doing and listen to what the planner, Lonnie Dixon from Hannah Keenan had to say about that and we had a pretty good back and forth with them and there were some, there were some comments of course about, you know, whether we should or should not do the, especially the planning area up to three miles and things like that. So, anyway, that, that will be coming forward to the planning commission at their next meeting and then of course to the council for approval at later this summer. So, anyway, that's all I can think of right now.
Okay, thank you, Matt. Uh, the next item on our agenda is the public comment with Darin Bray. Darin, you wanna come up here with the podium, please? And we normally allow three minutes for your presentation on this comment.
Thank you. Um, I'm Darwin Bray. I live on the corner of that 921 North Pobler and over the last five years, a lot of constructions happened to the north of me in the old baseball field that the city used to own that has been sold. Um, I've been having troubles with drainage issues across, around my house. Mike Haley, I know he's here, but he come up and looked at several of them. He actually put another tube across Pobler to help carry the water across, which has helped, but when there is an inch rainfall, two inch and a half rainfall, water will actually run over Pine Street, which is the street right north of me and at that point it'll also run across Pobler. So, it's running across both the streets. I got a couple of pictures of actually rocks that I have to mow now. That's washed off the road. Um, it's, I guess it's not my right to mow it, but I still write, mow it because I like to keep it nice. So, I'm just hoping to bring up some issues that maybe we need to look at possibly down the road or, you know, in the near future. I know there's the gutter or the culverts to the west of me across Pine and even the alleys, they're all, they are, the water doesn't run through them, they wash around them and then also washes across the road to the north, which goes across the north also, goes across, flows down another half a block, flows across Pine back into my side again. So, the water's just going back and forth across that street, ends up in front of my house and then it just builds up. I got, I got the pictures of where they put the second tube in and the dirt is actually starting to wash out underneath the tube, starting to take the dirt out from underneath the tube to wash it out. So, just wanna see if I can have somebody come up and take a look at it, maybe have some, I know John Kachet come up and when they started putting the housing development in, talked about the water flow and where the water comes from. I get water clear from the fairgrounds, comes clear my, my way through my ditches and everything that way. I just don't, just wanted to see if we can maybe do something different on Pine and Pobler.
I, I think there shouldn't be any problem with the city staff and, you know, maybe we can have our city engineers take a look at it and try to, try to help you resolve this issue.
I also live south of Darin and my ditch, the water comes down his ditch, goes through two pipes underneath the road and then I have a pipe that comes south underneath his driveway. My ditch is very, very deep and it's, it, when it comes from Darwin's, it comes and it drives the water with such force that it's driving down underneath the grass, making dirt, making a bigger hole. And then also it comes over and goes through a tube across the street just before my culvert that comes from around, that carries the water from in front of my house, around the corner, through the grass. There is no curb and gutter there. It cannot get through the hole of my culvert because it's settled so much that it won't take the water, so it goes out into Pobler Street, floods the street and the last rain we had, it came through there so hard that it actually had the top of the culvert underneath Darwin's driveway covered up and the water was clear up in my backyard and over the road and so it looks like, but if they, even if they curb and guttered it, they're gonna have to lower the street or they're gonna have to raise our yards because you could haul, I don't know how many dump truck loads of dirt in my backyard ditch to try to make the ground level.
Sure.
You know, but it's, it's terrible.
We, there was some concern when that development started and that this could happen, higher than that. And so, you know, we'll direct staff and, and see if we can come to a resolution and , you know, help you guys out if it's not hard to, you know.
I have one other thing I'd like to comment on. When Ken Stagmire was here and I was with the city, I asked Mr. Stagmire because my culvert had sunk, or my, yeah, my culvert again, right under, underneath my backyard or driveway, it had sunk and could, would they consider putting a new one in if I paid for it? Well, I never got an answer from him, so I, same thing with Mr. Haley. Mr. Haley beat my group of guys and they tried to pull those culverts up, the ends of them, but it still didn't do it and it still hasn't done any good and I'm still willing to pay for that to be done if somebody can, you know.
But let's staff take a look at it and see if we can come up with a resolution and help what we do.
All we hear is look at them and then I got several other pictures.
So, thank you for, for coming in.
Thank you.
Thank you. Really awesome.
Next item on the agenda is the June 17 council meeting minutes and appropriation 7A.
Got a question on one thing. Mayor, on the postmaster, do we still have a stamping machine we had here before?
Yes.
Okay. Is this for the utility billing only or is it also for the past due notices?
I'll check here.
It's on page, page four. Is that $852.38 for utilities only?
That would be utility only, yeah.
Yeah, and do they, they give you a bulk rate for that? Is that the reason you use that or?
Um, let's see, no, I don't think they do. They kind of said that there was an issue with it a couple of years back and they said that they couldn't give it to us any longer.
I see, so I just wondered. Thank you very much.
Any other questions? No other questions, I entertain a motion to accept the consent agenda in its entirety.
Absolutely.
Then moved by Councilperson Abel to accept the consent agenda in its entirety, that's second. Second by Councilman Peterson. Is there any further discussion? No further discussion, those in, back up, there's no further discussion. Man, who take a roll call, please?
Abel? Yes. Richard?
Yes.
Luttrell?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Oddie?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Gingler?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. The next item on the agenda is ordinance 2152 and this is needed to refinance the revenue bonds for the swimming pool. That was originally issued in September and I think we've been given a interest rate and stuff.
Yeah, it's hard to find on here, but if you go to Ashley, the page that says bond summary statistics at the top, it's about four or five pages in. Um, City of Beloit, um, Public Building Commission refunding revenue bonds series 2014, swimming pool, it says final at the top. If you go down about one, two, three, four, five, six lines, it says true interest rate, TIC, and that's the 3.773994 percent. That is the interest rate. The rest of them, I'm not sure what all that means, arbitrage and that and whatever it is, but the ones that true, that says true interest rate in there is the actual rate. So, right now we're at an average of 4.6, we go down to 3.77, which is what we were, our goal was a couple of years ago when we started this out. So, yeah, it's tiny print, it's hard to read, but that is, I mean, and when you get done reading all of this, that's what it really comes down to. We dropped almost an entire percent from 4.6 to 3.77. So, in essence, that's what it means.
Any other questions for staff?
Could you explain one more time exactly why does we need to do this and extend it over five years longer and pay more overall?
Right, yeah. Uh, the reason is I, the sales tax that was projected, I don't think was accurate from three, four years ago when we did that. So, I, I would advise revise it, refinancing anyway since we've dropped a whole percentage point, so that's, that's that. But to restructure it out to the five years would actually match up what we're getting in, in sales tax and he's using very conservative numbers, which he should. He's not showing any real increase, but we have, especially here, significantly increased recently, but he's not even showing that. So, it'll match up now with what we're actually, we're getting with, with actually what we would be paying in the debt service and so it's more accurate forecasting going forward. So, you don't have to raise anything as far as any of the revenue, it'll just match up now, is what it'll do unless you get a lower interest rate.
So, overall, we're going to be totally spending like 740,000 dollars more for those five years in a lesser payment?
No, I don't think so. I don't worry, what it got to.
On the third full page where it says net debt service, swimming pool project final, total debt service, bottom number there, 6,801,000 comparing it to, uh, what the prior bond's debt service was. I'm assuming that was what the original bond, 6,244,000. And the other one's on the page that you fired today.
Right. I thought he had another page here where it showed Ashley what the net was on now. Yeah, I mean, I can't explain it the way that he would. I mean, I, yeah, I mean, I can't explain it the way that he would, I mean, that's, that's the total annual debt service on it. And it does extend it out to other, and how that compares to the other one, I guess.
How much is our payment? Say like that was due tomorrow. How much would we be paying?
What's, how much would be what?
How much would the payment be if we were paying a payment tomorrow on the bond? I mean, do you pay it yearly?
No, twice a year.
Twice a year.
Twice a year. So, and Ashley brings it in line with, with the, what we're actually getting or close to.
We'll table it.
I don't know, I don't want to.
Well, we pretty much have to do, I mean, he's already, he's already.
I understand. We approve. Okay, the motions were made by Councilman Oddie that we approve, ordinance 2152, that's second. Second by Councilman Richard. Mandy, would you take your roll call vote, please?
Luttrell?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Abel?
Yes.
Gingler?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Oddie?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Thank you, Judge Perry. We have no resolutions this evening on the agenda. We move on to formal action and up on formal actions is the window bid for the downtown revitalization. We have rehabilitation on the walkway. Uh, I know there was some questions asked to me about the difference in the bids and why the, the higher bid was taken, but to my understanding that the higher bid was aluminum windows, they were all aluminum frames and so they should have a longer lifespan than the aluminum wood frames and it was within the, because I, I had a couple of council ask me and, and it was within what was budgeted for this project within them doing that. So, that's my understanding and then I'm sure they'll comment on that a little bit. Boy.
Given that, that's the only factor we can almost buy windows twice with a cheaper bid.
I understand.
There are, well, I, there just was no explanation with it, there was, you know.
Yeah, I understand. And that's why I, you know, I asked a few questions and that's, that's what was brought to my attention. I'm like.
It just looks like he, his bid form is not complete because he didn't give total prices for each one of these.
The low bid and the high bid.
The high bid. I mean, he just put the low bid, but to the extent of putting each, the amount for each item and then, um, the, whatever is my new official name, did not. And then he just puts a total bid price down below and that difference in the days, they start approximately 30 calendar days. This guy's gonna take 120 days where, uh, the other gentleman would be 51, I think it says calendar days, if that's correct, is it 51?
Well, it was.
You understand? And then I also, I like the idea from Geisler where he actually put the scope of work out, what he would do, what he would not do, put his notes there, if there's no window wraps, interior trim done, if the rotten wood sill is found, which you know good and well there is over there just by driving by, there being additional charge. Uh, they are licensed and insured and bonded. We'd have to add $900 and some dollars for bonding with this company in addition to the, to the bid price. And then also Geisler put down alternate work that we can have a signed change order if they find exterior wood trim need, would need to be replaced, maybe 475 linear foot, and the interior wood trim be replaced at 475 linear foot. And the other gentleman did not give us any explanation whatsoever. And...